Alright, we are recording. Welcome to Turner County Board of Education meeting. All the board members are seated and then they are discussing board business, which is illegal. They're doing it anyway, so we're gonna record. Here's your agenda for the night. See, there's a lot on here, but a lot of this, you see, Item 6, A through K. These are pretty much just... They call out the agenda item and they vote to approve it. And that's what you got there. Okay. Seated left to right. Far left of your screen is School Superintendent Christie Ray, Board Chairman David Mathis, Senator Blue, Cornelius Paul, Ann Kendrick, Sam Brown. Hello.
It's not broadcasting. It's recording.
I was gonna comment on a paper headline that I was talking about, what I'd never seen before.
Phantom Hooper.
Like, that was at Mother's Avenue, I saw him like, "Really?" It's kind of like an action he wrote.
Yeah, that was, that's the best headline I've ever read.
Well, it wasn't like he made it up, it apparently was said.
Yeah. That's one of those, if Jay Leno was still doing his headline shows, it would have been answered. That one's legendary.
University of Georgia. It's the greatest of all time. Without question.
Then that would be a good one, yes.
Good evening. Thank y'all for joining us for our November 11th meeting. Regular meeting, Turner County Board of Education. If you wouldn't stand with me, I'm at Turner County High School. Yes, the boss can lead us to the rest of the vacation.
Alright, that's great. Heavenly Father, thank you for your staff. Thank you for the opportunity, Lord, just to be in the midst of this meeting. Bless our board, as they make decisions, goes best for our school district, and also our schools, each and every school, our principals, our teachers, our students, and our parents. And, Lord, bless this community, and be with us each and every day. Do you know the blessings we ask of you in Jesus' name?
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and able to do justice for all.
Thank you, Lord, for this. We approve tonight's agenda, but it's the time being here today, being veterans, I feel it appropriate to thank our veterans. If we have any veterans in attendance, we appreciate their service to our country, so we can meet like this without fear of anything happening to us. Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda? There's a motion from Mr. Brown, and a second from your secretary. And a second from the hall of honor, Democrat. State of Staff Recognition.
That's it. Absolutely. Our first one is Ms. Stair O'Willoughby. She's not present with us this evening, so we wanted to recognize her. We invited her to this, to this meeting, to be recognized for her achievements within the Moultrie Expo from AVAC. It was actually based on outstanding educator recognition that she received back in the spring, but then with the mission to actually recognize formally faculty experts. So we are certainly proud of her and all of her accomplishments. And then we have two others, town values principals, who introduce their students, and we're gonna start off with Ms. Alyssa Howell.
Alyssa Howell. I had the pleasure of meeting Alyssa Howell when she was in our after-school program as a leader, and she was one of our faithful, faithful students that attended, and always pleasant, always had a great demeanor about her. And then later on, went to a rural workshop with her, and got a chance to work with her firsthand, and see the work that she does with our EFA chapter here at Turner County High School. I'm so proud of her accomplishment, she was able to play some one of our skills competition. And I look forward to seeing how far she goes with future ag competitions. So, Ms. Alyssa Howell, if you would come up.
Alright, our next recognition, Ms. Dr. Marich's Scholarship Residencies, and the middle school principal. Handle that honor, of course.
How's everybody? So, we've got some tremendous students to introduce to you tonight, and they're receiving a really nice, they're getting a really nice recognition, but... I want to talk about the REACH Scholarship. So, in case you don't know what the REACH Scholarship is, it's the realize an educational achievement can happen, okay? For that acronym. And it's a scholarship that's awarded to students that successfully participated in the REACH program in a Georgia public school. Okay? So, some of the stipulations, you know, is based on income, grades, behavior, attendance, etc. So, we just want good, well-rounded, well-balanced students that do a great job for our district. Okay? And so, they have an opportunity to apply for and receive up to $10,000 total scholarship, and that breaks down to getting $2,500 per year for four years. Okay? And so, these students that I'm about to introduce to you are high-quality students. They represent our district well. They represent Turner County Middle School very well, and we're extremely proud to honor them tonight. So, I would like to start with Mr. Jamari Cooley. If you will come up when I call your name, students. Ms. Chemistry Corelli. Ms. Anna Trillo. And Ms. Natalia Callejas. Alright, so again, I couldn't be more proud of these children. They, they do a great job. They go above and beyond. We started our new program, Leader and Lead. They represent the school well. They have taken on that new program, done well with it. They've taken on leadership, you know, projects and skills, and they're just, they're doing a great job. And so, we're very proud of them. I want to say one more thing. In regards to selecting our children, we had lots and lots of applicants. And we specifically get applicants in 8th grade. And so, what we did was, was we narrowed it down to 10 interviewees. And we went outside of the school system. We went into the community, and we wanted to get some neutral people to come in and represent our school, and then help us determine who they felt like would be some good recipients of this scholarship. So, we had a panel of judges, so to speak, to come in and do some interview questions, and just have some conversation with the children. And these are the children that those people chose. And so, we're so proud of them, extremely proud. So, I'd like to get a picture with them, too.
Beautiful.
So, one last thing. The official signing ceremony will be in early December, so we'll make sure to let you know that date, in case you'd like to be... Get my tickets for that. So, but we're so proud of you. Thank y'all students for doing a great job. Thank y'all very much, and congratulations. Do you have any request or proposal to mention? I'm number six, Item requiring Board Action, Director National Security Superintendent. I have a motion to approve, Mr. Speaker.
It says approval of HR organizations. It says vote not recorded. Why was that? Oh, everybody's name.
Oh, yes.
I'm sure it's you.
We'll get, we'll get corrected.
But that was, yeah, I was on the question. After we figure that out.
We voting to amend the current business.
Basically, the correct.
With the correction.
A motion from Ms. Blue, and a second from Ms. Kendrick, to approve. And this would be a new one. Hall of Fame. And approval of the SCS 24/5, please.
Motion.
Take it from Mr. Brown. Hall of Fame. Approval of the new middle high budget summary. Second, Ms. Blue, Hall of Fame. Approval of the squash budget.
Motion.
Thank you, Ms. Kendrick, Hall of Fame. Approval of the Kenny Plank resolution. Take it from Ms. Brown, Hall of Fame. Approval of the Justice One quote for SR040. Motion. Motion from Ms. Ball. Take it from Ms. Kendrick, Hall of Fame. Approval of the TCDS windows and door safety features.
That's the Rick, Rick Dandy. What's her, what's her address?
It's on one of the four quotes, your main boards. And actually, I would ask the chairman to table that vote. I know people have seen the package, if you've seen it, that we gave a final quote. It came on Friday, that was as requested by the board. Mr. Ball requested that last Monday. So, that final quote is now included. So, because in light of this new information, they're making the decision to have additional conversation before voting on the previous ones. You'll notice there's a significant difference.
But the final was much closer.
I agree, it's much less. And I was just doing this outside, when that is.
And it's a door.
And I was, but that was much less than I needed.
Can you want to tell that?
We, we have a request for G, and I'm assuming H as well, to be tabled. And we'll handle both of those in separate votes. So, we have a request for Item G to be tabled until later time. Do I have a motion? A second, I have a motion from Ms. Blue, and a second from Ms. Ball, Hall of Fame. Item G, the approval of TCES windows and door safety features is to be tabled. H is also being requested, that's the approval of US Green Print, its sign, its final covering quote for TCES windows. There's a request for that to be tabled as well, and I have a motion for that. I have a motion from Ms. Kendrick, and a second from Ms. Ball, for that. Hall of Fame. The approval of the sign.
I'll make a motion. A motion from Ms. Ball. A second.
Actually, we have a motion. I have a motion, first of all, and a second from Ms. Blue. Any discussion?
So, I guess I'm a little confused. This, this here is going to be, sorry, we're going to prove it. It doesn't match what we have. This whole.
This was approved last year.
Yeah, but it doesn't match what I have in my own sense.
Was it a different amount?
No, it's not a amount, it's not issue, it just, it doesn't include some whole.
Oh, that. That page is not missing.
This is a new page.
Yeah, that's all that exists.
It's a single page.
Yes, okay, that was my question.
I thought you meant the bonuses themselves.
No, no, that was my question, was this, it doesn't match.
So, so, so we have to approve this again?
That actually might be one of the conversations, it's just something that needs to be approved every year. It was approved last year, within, in my understanding, as over time evolves. If you would like it to be something that's continuous, we can make that change, or approve it every year, as the judge is capable.
I guess that makes sense, because we, we did it one time with all the teachers. We need to keep that ongoing, so it makes sense to have approved.
So, we need to approve.
For this 24/5.
Any further discussion? I have a motion from Ms. Ball, and a second from Ms. Blue, Hall of Fame. Approval of overnight field trip.
And we have two field trips for you to review tonight. And there is a little bit of a time crunch, so I do apologize for adding it late. The first one is from Ms. Langs, and that's the one that's going to be the overnight field trip. The date is February 24th, will be when they were departing, with a return date on February 25th. Five staff members, 25 students, and it is for the SEC LA Day, and the end-of-year trip, which is part of their C-Turn program. So, I ask that you approve that, unless you have some additional information.
Where are we, too?
Atlanta. And you can be held in the state farm arena.
I have a motion from Ms. Brown, a second. Second from Ms. Blue. Any further discussion? Hall of Fame. Approval of out-of-state field trip.
This field trip is actually going to be, it's from Mr. Jordan, and it's going to be the Auburn football game. But it's based on the 3E program, the N3E program, leadership program. They will leave on Saturday, November 16th, this Saturday, at 7:15 a.m. They will return back to Turner County High School at 8:30 p.m. So, it is a day trip, where they will be going out of state. So, the board motion to approve was there.
I have a motion from Ms. Ball. Second. Ms. Brown, Hall of Fame.
I will see you in my pack.
They're through yachts, so they came in through yachts today, this afternoon. So, they haven't gone through the whole yacht cycle yet. They're going to get back to me to show approval. But I knew if I didn't get that one on your agenda tonight, I wasn't going to be able to attend on Saturday. And that was for last week.
Out of state is the AI policy revisions.
We are actually still working with those. I was hoping to get those to you today. And going through all of our policies on simply, it was discovered we don't have. We were thinking we could just include a line item or sentence in one of our policies, addressing the AI issues that we're facing in the year 24, 25, 24 and beyond. But we don't actually have a policy in place where that would fit. So, we're actually having to create that policy. So, we're still working on that. And as soon as we get a draft, we'll get those two, since it's been laid on the table for 30 days, we're going to approve.
Are you saying we don't have an add-in to this on the policy?
We do, but the way that it was written, it's the way that this is ordered, it would not have fit. It was mainly just grades, you know, it was a basic.
Could add, you just could add another section?
I'll, I'll let you see it, and it didn't fit, I think, for the intent purposes of what we were trying to say with AI. And its implications.
I'll leave. Can you come to this?
Alex had said that she's going to be meeting, I think, the board on Thursday, so we have not put back the meeting yet. So, I do not have any updates from you, as far as it stands, if that's something that the board wishes to pursue. Um, Alex had said that she was going to be meeting, I think, the little one Thursday, so we have not put back them in yet, so I do not have any updates from you as far as, if that's something that the board wishes to pursue.
I did talk, I did go by, I suppose, maybe, um, I think Saturday already been. Their hours are from seven to seven.
Oh, yeah, are they?
Seven a.m. to seven p.m., except on Tuesdays and Fridays. They close at twelve on Tuesdays, and Fridays at five.
How does membership work there, or how do you, because of the?
I didn't even ask that. But, but I got to talk.
Twenty-five dollars a month.
Twenty-five?
That's free every month.
I'll get it for you, Joe.
Yeah, I see, I must, I must have thrown him around in one of my slots, and then I, I taught him about it pretty good, but it was, it was therapy, and so I had to.
But Jimmy Keating. Amazing, he works there, said that, um, he said, how many, you know, whether he could put a lot box, and I just go, mm.
Item nine, this information items for board, superintendent, can you make this, number seventy-six?
So we are excited about Superintendent Woods coming on December the sixth, um, and we had the discussion at the board work session Monday night, and knew that, uh, another school was selected as a literacy leader school, we got the email the next day, last Tuesday, letting us know that high school is actually going to be a math leader school, that's, uh, the name of the award recognition. Um, so I will say that there were only thirty-something schools in the state of Georgia that received the literacy, um, I think there were three hundred and something in the state of Georgia that received the math leader awards, but we are very excited and fortunate to be one of those. We're excited about the growth, um, the progress that was made, the student achievement this past year, we anticipate, you know, showing more gains, more growth this year, but it's nice to be recognized, and we look forward to it, Superintendent Woods coming on December the sixth.
Would you lead to TCMS, TCMS with this literacy leader school, TCHS with this math leader school?
They will be bringing the banners, we will have banners. Up in the presentation.
Construction of that.
I don't have any addition, unless you have questions, then I'll report on my demo.
And we discussed, uh, the law through, for, for us, and hopefully Mr. Baker will be able to join us for that.
You want me to go ahead and schedule it, I can schedule that for our other dates, and see what ones come along.
Have the hub date and athletic schedules?
Those will provide it to you, we can have it on Monday night.
Uh, tight and timed newsletter, and coach's forum newsletter.
I was hoping to have it to you today, we have those in printed copies, but now we're going to deliver thirteen before they arrive, so online, we told the Ms. Adams we'll hand deliver those this week to you, so that'll be a nice little addition to your routine's paper, which will be soon.
Item ten, items from the desk of the superintendent?
Um, the only thing addition, you actually mentioned at the beginning of the program, we definitely want to recognize our Veterans Day, today's veterans, and we honor them, we contribute to them, um, if you were able to be part of the Veterans Day program this morning, or able to attend, it was extraordinary. Um, the precise nature, I mean, every movement, every word, that R and T secret, um, along with Sergeant Jackson, Sergeant Redd, just did an extraordinary job of well-recording Turner County, Turner County schools, and honoring our veterans, so, um, it was special. I know that we did get that recorded, um, so that would become, been posted at some point.
It's already up.
Okay, it's already up, so you didn't see it. Um, the last thing was, we did the, um, I think, I think Ms. Walker passed those out to you, um, the audit results that you asked for, because it was the last time standing by Dr. Lyndon River, um, so those have been provided to you, I know you just got them, so we, um, review them, have any questions about it? I will give you a quick overview, I can tell you that if you're looking at the results themselves, um, military science teachers, um, had the largest variances as we expected, um, and that was due to those NIP calculations, um, and they did include their local supplement and their additional school contributions and extended here. And the only other item was, um, this fastest compensation for a forty-day extended day year rather than a third of day, um, which was approved in the previous school year for assistant principal. Um, numbers three, four, and five were expected, as far as the pre-check salaries, we know that there was some discrepancies there in the way that they're funded, um, that's not anything in the Turner County school system. And then, of course, with our secretaries and bookkeepers, um, we have our own local paraprofessional scale, which didn't align, um, so that was why that was pointed out. So that, that was it, like I said, the first two items are the ones that we expected, which I want to do the issues that were discovered in y'all, but if you have any additional questions, um, once you dig into it, please get myself on the spot.
So the individuals that are highlighted, and I'm assuming they fall under the?
Those are the ones I just listed, the ones highlighted in red, you see, the first one is assistant principal, and the next one is military science, the third one's military science, and everybody's enough one for a three-day.
Okay.
This is for FY twenty-five.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four.